Sandy, why don't you bring Jim in before we officially start, please?
I would, but he's not here.
There he is.
Hello.
Hey, Jim, you got video?
I do, I gotta just start it, yep.
Man, you can't take a hint, can you?
Nah, come on.
All right, we're just gonna open up. So this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on February 2nd, 2022, and the Two River Times on February 3rd, 2022. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notices and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance to the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the Board Secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call, please, Sandy.
Mr. Borderline?
Here.
Mrs. Bush? Mrs. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Paolo? Mr. Ralph?
Here.
Mr. Nitka?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mrs. DeAngelo? Mr. Burkhart?
Here.
And Mr. Leader?
Here. Would you please join me in a salute to the flag?
No.
Pledge allegiance?
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which is in.
For God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
I lost my screen. Oh, boy. Give me a sec. I don't know what just happened.
Unshare screen?
I accept that it, that whole thing went away for some reason. Let's see.
All right, well, you.
All right, here we go. Sorry, we're back.
All right, great. Okay, so here we are. Doug is not gonna be here tonight. Doug had a conflict, and so he can't be here. So we are without counsel. We have a couple of items on new business. We're going to hear from CCH, who has submitted to be the planner for what remains of 2022. So we'll hear a presentation. We did request that all of the planners who submitted appear. There were a few conflicts, but CCH was able to attend, so we're anxious to hear from them. Next item on the agenda is the land use committee memo. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at it. We're just gonna discuss it briefly. And then we have a list of administrative items. So without further ado, did I see Michael and maybe somebody with Michael Sullivan?
He said he's gonna have Donna Miller, and I see him and Donna there, so I'm gonna bring them in.
Super, thank you. Greetings, Michael.
Greetings, Chairman Leader.
Oh, Donna's a butterfly.
Well, that's interesting.
There's Donna.
Hi, more of a dragonfly.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming. As you know, the Planning Board of Fairhaven is looking to appoint a planner for 2022, and we had invited the potential candidates to come in and to present to the board, and we thank you for coming tonight. Michael, I had previously discussed with the board your prior representation of the planning board, and maybe at least as part of what I'd like you to present tonight is your experience with the board and doing the master plan back in 2016, and then, of course, help us understand, you know, things at CCH today and, you know, how you view the potential engagement with the planning board in the future if they elected to choose CCH.
Great, okay, I'll do that. Thank you for inviting us tonight. Michael Sullivan, I'm a principal with Clark, Gaten, Hints in Trenton, New Jersey. We're a planning, architecture, and landscape architecture firm, so we are a multidisciplinary firm. With me is Donna Miller, a colleague of mine who works closely with me in, like, Asbury Park and some other municipal clients. We, we have between 35 and 40 at any time municipal clients spread throughout the state in various capacities in our, in our practice. Some of those are simply board representation. In some places, we work throughout the municipality for the, for the municipality and the boards, and in some cases, we're simply brought in as a specialist for a particular project or affordable housing plan or things like that. So we have a broad range of experience. As the chairman said, we, we have worked with you before, and we started back in 2015, and we, we began working on the master plan reexamination report in 2016 that involved doing a survey, and the survey was very carefully vetted by the community stakeholders and the advisory committee that we work with. But ultimately, the survey produced some good results going into the reexamination report, and it really set, set up some of the things that I, I know that you've already undertaken, such as your, your affordable housing compliance plan with the, with the court. And I know that you've been working diligently on some bicycle pedestrian connectivity work. Typically, our work with the boards solely would involve review of applications. When I was there back in, four years ago or so, we were looking at, you know, how to first protect the neighborhoods in a large way from overbuilding of homes and of homes that were unsympathetic to some of the traditional building styles. I grew up in Oceanport, very familiar with Fairhaven, the whole coastal area there, and, you know, the, the traditional homes and the layouts of some of the neighborhoods are precious, and I've seen in unnamed nearby towns where those relationships and buildings haven't been been taken care of, and I can see how things can fall away very quickly, and you can lose that character. So that was one of the things we focused on, and that's a large part of our practice. You know, we're not just policy planners, we are, you know, designers as well. Maybe I should say this, I'm also a landscape architect, so, you know, between planning, urban design, and landscape architecture design, it all feeds into our work. The other things that we focused on back then were thinking about how to make the downtown or the business district more robust along, along, along river road, and to find a way to do that in a way that added value and prompted investment and reinvestment, but didn't, you know, create too much traffic. Traffic's been an issue along river road and pedestrian safety and other things like that. So those two were the main issues. I'd begun working on the Fairhaven Fields a little bit with some of the folks there before we were uninvited to work for the borough anymore. And so that's, that's what we do. So our work with the board would be, you know, review of applications, consulting on any development regulations or issues that come up, special studies that, that might come up. We recently were doing a build-out analysis for a town which was preserving a tract through the formal preservation program or open space, and they needed to demonstrate that there was some value in the project, the, the tract could be developed. So, so little things like that come up here and there, as well as development applications. And a lot of the things that we've been working on recently, just to give you a flavor of what our recent work has been, we've been implementing affordable housing plans for our towns, and in a lot of cases or several cases, that involves redevelopment planning, development of redevelopment areas, creating specialized regulations, and working on how to get the redevelopers to contribute and construct certain public improvements that they might not ordinarily need to construct under typical development in order to integrate these affordable housing projects and districts into towns. That's been very challenging. We just finished a massive redevelopment plan in Wildwood, New Jersey. For, if anybody knows Wildwood, there's the Boardwalk, which is the street that everybody wants to be on because it's close to the beach, and you can shoot water guns and win prizes and eat food. But the Pacific Avenue District is the traditional downtown of, of Wildwood. And that's where the Woolworths was and the banks were, and that's where everybody locally went. And there was also some great music clubs there, too, which Wildwood was famous for. But it, it's been in a period of neglect and disinvestment over the years. So we have, we designated that area as an area in need of redevelopment over 315 properties. It created very interesting, we, it was like a two-year process of vetting ideas and getting the community input and the development community input to find out how to redevelop that and reinvest and get reinvestment to happen there, but not just get reinvestment, but get reinvestment in a way that really would lead to some great outcomes in terms of architecture and urban design and, and land use. And that's just in its early stages, and it's just starting to get developer interest, so we've been working on that. We've also done a lot of park design. We completed a couple of years ago Glassboro Town Square, which is the real armature between Glassboro, the, the place, and Rowan University. It's really where the town and the gown meet. It's a four-acre park, and it's highly programmed and highly specialized in certain areas for myriad activities, and it's really been a great success. And I've been, I've provided in our, in our, in our proposal package, a host of different information sheets with images and descriptions of a lot of our projects, planning projects, open space projects and redevelopment projects, so that you would have that as a background for what we do. Specifically, in Fairhaven, I would be the principal in charge. Donna would be my backup and would assist me in working on applications or working on projects. And, you know, we, we know that within our schedules, we do have this night of the week open, the third Tuesday, so we are, understand that we have the ability to come to these meetings, which is a big part, if you're gonna hire somebody as your planner, they need to be able to attend. So we confirm that we, we could attend those meetings. Why don't I let Donna talk a little bit about her experience for a few minutes, so you can get a sense of her?
Unless anyone's got something specific they wanna ask Michael. Good evening, Donna Miller. I am a licensed professional planner with an AICP, and I'm also a certified flood, certified flood plan manager. My background is in design as well. Although my goal is the landscape architect, I studied landscape architecture at Rutgers as part of my planning education. My interest in urban design stems from, from that, and so I tend to focus on things like how things work when I'm looking at development review applications. In Asbury Park, where I do significant amount of my planning work these days, we focus a great deal on pedestrian connectivity, land use context, as well as architectural and site design. I'm not sure. So, and then when you reach further, further back into my background, I also have some experience doing, wow, sorry, working with nonprofit groups, community organizations that were focused on accessibility. So issues related to wheelchair accessibility, the, the blind community, people needing, having mobility issues and being able to get around in public spaces. And I did that in the city of Tampa a number of years ago, but it's something that still carries forward in my work today.
Great.
And as far as my local knowledge, I do live in Monmouth County, have been here for just about 20 years. Previously worked for the Borough of Monmouth Beach and have done some planning work for Middletown Township in the Belford area and in, oh, and in Seabright. So have some, some familiarity with the region, Twin Rivers area.
Thanks, thanks, Donna. I don't know if if anybody here remembers how we do our, our planning reports for the board. I mean, these are, we generally will have a, you know, summary description of what the big picture is, relief necessary, but we also include exhibits if we need to of photographs and try to give folks the best well-rounded picture of what's going on and focus on the big, the big issues of those. And if you would like examples of our planning reports, we'd be happy to, to give those to you. I've said a lot. I, I hope to leave time for as many questions as you feel you need to ask. So I'd be happy to open up to questions now and fill in any blanks that you may need to be filled.
So, Michael, I know your main office is in Trenton. And so how would the travel issues be addressed and the remoteness issues be addressed? I assume that when you're doing a review, that someone's going to make some sort of a site visit and maybe just sort of wrap all that up with, with kind of how the, the billing structure would, would work so that the board members can understand.
Yeah, I mean, as a, as a, as a general proposition, you know, we, when we, when we travel, whether it's to a meeting, whether it's to a job site or something, if we are on an hourly basis and not a fixed fee basis, we are charging our time portal, portal. We, we get paid for our time. If, if there's a desire to have a set fee for meetings or for something that would encompass really an average of that, so that applicants or the, or the borough were being charged significantly for that, then we'd be able, we could negotiate something like that. As a general proposition, we try to minimize any cost to the borough itself through that. But we also recognize that when you have a lot of applications that might be coming from folks who are not big developers, like, you know, like a Mattel and Mumford or somebody, then, you know, folks are very sensitive to the invoices for review. So we try to keep those, those types of applications to a very small, you know, range of, of cost. Most are not that complex, so we can do that.
Yeah, my, my thought, Michael, is that with the planning board, the applications are very diverse. You know, it could be anything from the Acme site, which was subject to site plan review and some remodeling a handful of years ago, to just a change of use application, you know, for one of the houses that have been converted. And I think that for the board members, what's most important is that they get an apples and apples comparison. And so I would think that having a fixed fee for meeting attendance, you know, based on either an average or an anticipated number, if that would allow us to eliminate travel time. I think that review of applications, however, where at the zoning board, we, we've actually discussed having a one-size-fits-all approach because they're all residential with few exceptions, and we've taken that out of the, of the fixed fee. But with regard to reviews of applications, I think it would be a lot to ask because we can't predict what they would be. But with regard to meeting attendance and that travel, I think that we would wanna discuss a fixed fee, and maybe after the meeting, maybe you could let me know, so I can share with board members, you know, kind of how that would work, so that they can compare that, as I think the other applicants would be billing that way.
Sure, that, that would be fine.
Do any other board members have any questions, Michael or Donna?
I'd be curious, just in your experience, if you look at, you know, the, the town is obviously in the, the, you know, throes of considerable change with the fair share development going on. You know, it just, it's sort of a philosophical question. How would you approach our downtown? You know, how, you know, and just sort of broadly speaking, if you look at the difference between the historic district, commercial district, and, you know, the, the possibility of properties turning over over time. What do you, you know, how do you, how do you think about that? How do you think about unifying, you know, even just the commercial district? How would you, how would you, you know, think about sort of screwing that, that streetscape together?
Well, this isn't the first time I've thought about it. So I feel like I have some, some previous knowledge about, about these thoughts. So one of the things I think about the downtown is that there are lots of sites that have been developed over time that have, you know, abutting parking areas and driveways and buildings, you know, and some are up front, most, some are pushed back, and it's this sort of scattering of things, and there's, you were talking, you just mentioned it, how would you weave it together? And what's interesting about whenever we get together with folks who are planning for their place, their town, or their districts, they always wanna know, how do we get this? How do we get this? And the only way that developers do anything is if they get paid for. And so I would encourage, and they get paid for, and, and the easy way to get paid for it is for the development rates to be increased. And so I think that, and I, and I, and I think that there may be some way to do it in Fairhaven whereby you look at the business district and you create a, a, a series of regulations that provide for an enhanced or increased bit of development rights. And that the ticket to those is also doing things from a design standpoint that are good. And I'm saying that combining parking lots, having circulation and reducing driveways along river road, doing, creating, you know, having a good, a stronger pedestrian connection. This is what we're doing in Wildwood, right? In Wildwood, they had mandatory non-residential zoning on their ground floors, right? For a mile long of Pacific Ave, it might be longer than a mile long. And they, and they, and they had maximum or minimum size dwelling unit sizes, okay, which is illegal, by the way. I'm not a lawyer, but I know it's illegal to have minimum dwelling unit sizes. And we stripped that away. We said, why are you burdening these? We had developers come in and say retail development can't even get financing through the banks in many cases anymore. So if the banks aren't financing it, it's almost becoming like art gallery space, like the, the retail's a throwaway. And what would drive it? Well, residential, an increase in residential development. A lot of people don't like to hear that, right? They think about schools, they think about costs, they think about other things. But the reality is that with the demographics these days, shifting demographics and folks having fewer kids and people needing, you know, affordable, small A housing, that multifamily residential is very popular. It can drive the economics of something. And to the degree that you can calibrate it, that it would allow heightened returns for developers who would do good things with the rest of their site, then finding that balance might be something you'd be interested in. I know that, you know, Wildwood is not the only town, and they were very slow to come to the idea of increasing, removing commercial and increasing residential. But we work with economists and real estate experts on this, and they showed that, they showed the, the pro forma, the rough pro forma of what that would mean in terms of tax revenue and other things. And when you combine that with a redevelopment scenario, now you have fiscal tools that you can bring in that can really help development. So that's a lot I put in there, but the bottom line is think about what you can give to developers or would be developers to get what you want. And, you know, I think about consolidating parking, you know, eliminating non-residential parking requirements. We did that in several places. We did it in Wildwood, unburdening these sites from having to provide, provide those parking. Ultimately, the way we talk about this and the way towns are looking at it, if there's a parking problem in your business district, the private sector will recognize that as a business opportunity, and maybe there's a PPP solution with the public and the private together, and then you can be in the driver's seat. Get it? And you can, and, and you can mandate how that gets done, if there's like some consolidated parking facility. And maybe that's a multimodal transit facility where you have bikes, you get people to park there, then they grab bikes and they can ride around to the downtown, so. I'm sorry if I gave you too much on that, but I, you know, because I don't know what you've been facing since I haven't been there. But, you know, it's always about what can you give somebody to get them to pay for the things you want them to do?
Okay, and, and so I guess a follow-on question. Is there, in your experience, is there a town, having dealt with us, having dealt with lots of other municipalities, you know, the, sort of, you know, I don't wanna say a vision that we can aspire to, but maybe a structural model? Because what you're saying is you're saying use economics to create incentives to drive development. But, you know, in your experience, sort of in New Jersey, or, you know, we just went through the town survey that sort of dovetailed off the master plan, and there was a lot of reflections from, you know, people in town that they, they, you know, my Fairhaven and, you know, this, this hamlet, you know, they have this, this vision of the place. Is there, you know, i- i- as you, if, you know, as you're approaching our town, you know, from the planning point of view, is there another town that, you know, you would point us to or you'd be thinking about, or a couple of towns that we could, you know, beyond Wildwood, which is obviously relevant but very different, but, you know, is it, is it, you know, Montclair or Summit, or is it, you know, is it, I don't know, Middletown? I, I, how, you know, is there, is there a town, or towns you have in the back of your mind that you should be thinking about?
Yeah, well, you know, the scale of Fairhaven is, is, is really small, like it's tiny, right? Compared to all places, like when you talk about a Montclair, Montclair allows massive development on the outskirts of their historic downtown. Like, they got the historic area, but when you travel south and you get to, what's the street? Anyway, the big street that's, that's down there. They, they allow very large development there, and that helps feed the, 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 the cost, and it helps bring in the customers, you know, the walking wallets that come in and they pay for stuff, right? That's the, that's the thing. Lambertville is one of those towns that sticks to their, sticks to their guns from a historic perspective and is highly desirable and successful in New Jersey. They, I think that they may be too too protective of their historic aspects, and I think that there's room for change there. So they look for places where they can, it's all about your capacity for change, you know, where can you change, right? So identify those places, you know. An old DPW facility is a great place where you can leverage development, right? That's what Lambertville's doing. They're finding those places and protecting what's, what makes Lambertville, Lambertville, if you drive down Brit Street, Haddonfield. We've worked in Haddonfield on and off on spec, on redevelopment projects, but also continuously as a affordable housing planner. And nobody guards their historic district more than Haddonfield. I mean, they're the poster child for New Jersey. And, but they've been looking, as I've said, where can we change? And they found those places where they can combine lots and get parking, or they can put in some multifamily residential behind the main street, but connect it to the main street so that it can feed the main street, get some people some housing. It's near a train station. So that's a, that's a great example of retaining historic character and allowing development in key places.
I would love to get a sample of your work in Haddonfield, and for those on the board that haven't driven through Haddonfield, I happen to be, I passed through there about three months ago and was. three months ago and was moved. My dad grew up there and I didn't realize how historically significant that town was. I was moved by how well done it is and and so hats off to you for that that work.
Well, I I have to be honest, designed the whole town, but only half of it. Was for years, if your dad grew up there, he would know Joan Aiken and she, she was like the the Ayatollah of historic preservation. And she really made things work there. And the two projects that I could point to that we worked on, one was for the the school there, there's a, it was a school by the high school, it was a private school for, I think, development mentally disabled folks. And we did a redevelopment plan for there. Show and we, it was a big community input thing to try to figure out scale and things, and I think ultimately they used that as a way to negotiate a sale. Also redevelopment plan for historic building and to accommodate some affordable housing and some other things on it. But it's interesting.
Michael, let let me ask you, did you have another follow up?
Thank you very much, Michael. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, Michael, one, one of the things that we have now, since you're gone, is we now have our overlay districts and a settlement on affordable housing. And one of the things that we need to have covered is the the role of the planner in that, you know, continuing process. I understand that there is an appointment of somebody who's supposed to do something, you know, we're very new to this. Can you help us understand, to the extent that you understand, what the process of stepping into the shoes of our existing planner with regard to the with regard to the affordable housing elements, how much work is there? Is it complicated for you to transition it? Is it, is there an efficiency issue there? Is there a background issue where you need to get up to speed? This is all new to us.
Yeah, so so, you know, you've got a, you've got a settlement and a and a judgment or post with the court. And implementation of the plan is is where you're at right now. So we don't, we don't do, what do they call it? We don't place people and and units and things like that. We don't do any of that. But we would, if there were, let's say that part of your implementation required a sewer service area amendment. We would work with your engineer to make sure that amendment worked and 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 I don't think that's something that you're working on. We would have to get up to speed on the status of where we are. We know that there was just a affordable housing development approved. Eminem's project, which is approved and I I assume they're going to build it now and there's going to be, I believe, two, two or four, I I can't remember, I read it a couple of weeks ago. Affordable dwelling units there, so making sure that with your, that any of your development fees are accounted for in the spending plan, so that you keep track of all the developer fees that come in, because you're going to have to keep track of those. And keeping track of the units that get built so that in 2025, when you get a new number, you can look back and say, yes, we've done everything we're supposed to. In the third round and now in the fourth round, we've got this new number and let's think about how we're going to do this. It 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 does take a little bit of time to catch up. But it's really just reading the the core of the plan, you know, the summary parts of the plan, making sure we understand the the fair share plan and the spending plan. And so I gotta plug my my machine in here. But we, but this is something we routinely routinely do. You know, we were, I'm still working on implementation for plans that were done in the third round a couple of years ago that they had judgments a couple of years ago, and it's an ongoing thing. It really depends on the size of your obligation, how many projects you have in there. If, you know, vacant land adjusted town, then and you've got your overlays in place. Then as the overlays, as somebody comes in to do a project in the overlay district, you review it. You make sure that it's compliant in terms of the, first of all, the the zoning and the density and the anticipated number of dwelling units, because if it's a, if it's a 20% set aside or it's a 15% set aside, you want to make sure you get the number, but you got to get the bedrooms right and you got to get the affordability right, the micro requirement, so we do all that. And we'll make sure that if you, if something comes in under one of the overlays, that you are you are compliant and you're not going to get burned. Every once in a while, we will have a project in one of our towns that may may be challenged, it may miss a unit or two. And at that time, we'll, before we do anything, we figure out how to replace that unit within the framework of your plan. So that, you know, when we go to Fair Share Housing Center and we say, listen, we've got it, we lost a unit here, but we're going to make it up every year. Are you good? If they're good and the master's good and the court's good, so we get it through the court. The last thing we want to do is do anything that would jeopardize your immunity from any sort of builder's problem.
Let me just reframe that question. So we actually have, no, I, the answer was fine. I just want to be more specific. The realistic development potential in Fairhaven, as I recall, is four. And once the Eminem project is built, I think there's two in the apartment, there's one off site and we'll be building a two-family in town that'll satisfy the realistic development potential. We obviously have unmet need, but the overlay zones are done. So if you're handling the affordable housing stuff, is it materially different than how you would be reviewing the ordinances on another application, to the extent that it's already, you know, codified?
Well, from a, from a, a planning standpoint, no, it's just making sure that we don't, it's making sure that the the the, if there's an affordable housing component, that that's taken care of and it's done in the right way. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
That's it. That that's the layer that's added on there.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
I do.
You're up, Betsy.
Oh, okay. I'd like to go back to the work you referenced in Wildwood. And I, are you suggesting that the opportunities for commercial development on the first floor are no longer valid, that perhaps landlords are now looking to fill that space with tenants as opposed to commercial use? I think you used the term art gallery.
Yeah, so that's a, I say that in, and I've seen that in several places. I'm not saying that that's the case in Fairhaven. You, you're, you're, you would, you would know that if you saw, you know, four rent signs, if you saw vacant stores. If you're not seeing vacant stores, then that's probably not a problem for you. I use that as an example because it's the planners and every urbanist's dream that you have this unending, you know, carpet of cool shops with apartments above it. And there's only so much market available to do that. So when we look at projects or districts, we actually try to understand it and we bring in technical specialists in real estate market and other things to gauge the amount of like disposable income or what the trends are to tell us whether or not there's too much retail or not. But it was clear in Wildwood's case where we have vacant stores, we have dilapidated buildings and we've got illegal apartments stuffed upstairs that it wasn't working there. And that by removing the, and this is yet to be tested, but we're already seeing projects coming that are 100% residential in Wildwood. But that by removing that requirement that they have non-residential on the first floor, it now frees them up or a buyer to say, listen, I'll take your property, I'm going to redevelop it with these cool new standards that that everybody wants today, but I'm going to take the commercial away. It opened it up and that was validated because we also in our, we we conducted a series of public meetings and stakeholder meetings that were focused around different sectors. One of those sectors was the development community and we had a developer from Philadelphia show up on a Zoom call and he says, yes, that's exactly right. Do not make us quit resident or retail on the first floor. There's a, there's a place for that in Wildwood, but it's not the entire length of the district. And so for Wildwood, that was the right answer. It may or may not be the right answer in Fairhaven.
He's so, I'm sorry, Betsy, please.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say that, Michael, I I guess what I understood, what you were saying was that in terms of extracting from developers, things that you might want, that would be public improvements. The idea was to create carrots for them. And I think what what you've explained here is that in Wildwood, they invited developers to use the first floor, which would otherwise be restricted to commercial as residential, as a carrot, in order to encourage them to do things beyond what they might have otherwise done and get the higher level of public improvement. And so the trade off in Wildwood is to get improvement of the overall downtown in exchange for whatever that is to not have commercial in those buildings where where it's given up.
That, that's exactly right. It's exactly right. Yeah, and 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 just to think about it in these terms, it it's great, most residential development uh, when they're constructed, fill up very quickly. But in some places, you don't see, you would not see the retail fill up quickly and you don't want to have people above a vacant store. I mean, you just don't want that, so.
So we did deal with that, Michael. When the Affordable Housing Committee addressed the overlay zones, there was a lot of concern about market forces, about the about the aggressive nature of developers that are moving, you know, multifamily residential wherever they can and the specific desire of Fairhaven to preserve its downtown and specifically its commercial uses. We have learned through COVID and I think we also learned, I think, much better after the survey that you helped us with, how much the residents of Fairhaven appreciate its commercial downtown. In fact, we did another survey as part of the restaurant committee, which was formed after an application of Dunkin' Donuts that came into town. And those direct communications with residents showed us how much people appreciated and utilized the commercial district. And so we do struggle with that in trying to figure out where our carrots are, recognizing that we really do want as much commercial, the right kind of commercial, you know, to remain in Fairhaven.
Yeah, yeah.
David, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I think a lot of our issues when we're looking at particularly commercial development involve drainage, particularly stormwater drainage. I'm wondering if you could quickly tell us your ideas or approaches to managing that.
Okay, so in in site development, you know, we're not the site civil engineer, but as a landscape architect and and somebody who reviews sites all the time, you know, our our thing is to where can you, where can you catch water? Where can, how can you maximize that, you know, and where where can you, you know, how do you design a parking lot so that you create more catchments for water and also feed the plants that you might need around the parking lot for buffering and things like that? And then making sure that, you know, roof roofs drains are going to the right place on that. But I'm always looking for a place to absorb water. That's our, that's how we approach it.
Anyone else have anything further?
Actually, if I could just piggyback on that. I presume you guys have updated your stormwater management ordinance for the new regs. Did you change the threshold for major or minor development?
We have. We actually just had it last night on our agenda at our council meeting.
So that's another mechanism. In Asbury Park, we did, you know, reduce the threshold. So minor developments are are required to do some storage, some water quantity and quality measures, rather than just, you know, accepting the state's minimum thresholds. So you get, you capture more that way, you know, you're not going to have, you know, the large greenfield type development that other suburban communities are, you know, caught in that net. So that is a mechanism that's available.
Okay. Anything more, everyone? Michael and Donna, anything further to add?
I want to thank you for inviting us to submit our qualifications and inviting us here to listen to my long-winded planning explanations tonight. And I hope you have a great night and let us know, I'll I'll send you some information on the the meeting. Fee and let us know if you need any more information. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It was a pleasure.
Both of you, it was nice to meet you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, Betsy, you have your hand raised?
Oh, sorry, I started to do that. I didn't want to interrupt you before. Is it down?
Yeah, it's down now. So the next thing on the agenda was the land use committee memo. Did everybody see it in their inbox? Did, did anyone get a chance to read it?
I did.
Yes.
Betsy, you wrote it. So what I, what I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, you haven't really had much time to absorb it. But what what essentially is going on here is that there has been sort of ongoing discussions in town about the status of our ordinances relative to residential development. And there have been for many, many years discussions about how to do things to improve and tweak the system that we have in place right now. The the memo that you see is the result of a number of months worth of work by a committee originally appointed by Mayor Luke Gurelli and then I don't know, reinvigorated by Mayor Halpern. And the the dialogue that is being initiated with this board is an effort to try to fill in the gaps with public involvement related to the really five issues that are on the table that are kind of open. And so what I'm interested in is getting a handful of people from the planning board together with a handful of people from the zoning board to start a discussion about how best to determine the mechanisms for developing those last bits. So as you, as you look at it, you'll see that the recommendation as to a couple of the ordinances was repeal. Because the idea was that new changes will eliminate the need for those things and they've caused some some negative consequences. The the three standards that kind of need to be worked through relate to, first of all, the first floor elevation. And so the first floor elevation is the finished finished grade of your first floor. So your hardwood floor, it would be like right at the top of that. And so the question is, if you're going to set a maximum height, what do you measure it against? Members of the board may remember with subdivisions, we've talked about pinning that first floor elevation to the crown of the road. We also have used the curb line in the affordable housing overlay zones. There are other mechanisms available. The complication is that if you think about the topography of the lots in town, they vary depending on where you are. And so the the proposal is to put together a single standard that would be universal. Exceptions could be granted by variance, but the idea would be to try to prevent this new development pattern where you see homes being built with 10-foot basements and first floor elevations that are far exceeding the existing first floor elevations of the neighboring homes. So that's number one. The second thing is the prevailing front yard setback. So what you'll see as you move around town is that every once in a while, you'll see a house that doesn't quite fit in relative to its neighbors because it's using a front yard setback that is not in line with the neighboring houses. The one that I think is the best example of this is right along Schwenker's Pond on River Road. There's a home that was built about 15 years ago that sits almost entirely in the front yard of the immediately adjacent home. The reason for that is because the front yard requirements along River Road are something like 25. But the historical development pattern is something closer to 50. And so when that house was built, they satisfied the requirements and built a fully conforming home. The problem is that the end result of that was to build a home that is entirely inconsistent with the development pattern. So the proposal with regard to the prevailing front yard setback is to require that a development meet the greater of those two standards, the prevailing front yard setback or the minimum. And so the question for public discussion and for us to try and help the council with is to figure out how to determine Um, is to figure out how to determine what that prevailing front yard setback is. Now, it's easy enough to stand back and look at it. But what we need to do is to determine sort of a routine way of calculating it in a way that doesn't overly burden an applicant. Um, by requiring that they get a surveyor to measure three block, blocks worth of houses. Um, to figure out a way to measure it without making that measurement so precise that these measurements cost a thousand dollars. Um, or maybe that's not possible, but presum- presumably. There's a way to do it that will achieve the desired result without creating a five thousand dollar cost item on the development of a new home. And so that's, that's that issue. And the last one is kind of the, the biggie. Um, there is a uh, long historical uh, story behind how we measure. Um, and how we regulate the size of homes. And so in Fairhaven. Um, there was a relatively novel idea of um. Regulating the size of homes as something called floor area ratio. Um, and what happened was, this is twenty-five years ago now. Um, there was something that was useful in commercial development. Um, and there was a D variance created under the MLUL for exceeding habitable floor area. Um, how to floor ratio. Uh, this, by the way, this is, this is, uh. This is all of this according to Todd. This is as I understand it. Don't cite any of this. You know, this may be pretty close to correct, but not entirely accurate, but this is the way I understand this. So, um, they drew from the, well, let's go back to this. You can't create a new ordinance, right? So in the MLUL, you have a C one and a C two. And then you have about eight different D variances, four of which really come up most often. In development applications, there's nothing else. There's no E variance, there's no, there's no B variance. So you have to fit within those categories. So when you're regulating homes. You're stuck with a C, which requires a majority vote. Or you're able to get to a D, which requires a super majority vote, which is five out of seven at the zoning board. Exclusive jurisdiction, this board has no jurisdiction over it. Habitable floor area is a D variance. So by design, um, the, um, the. Land use ordinances were designed to include a D variance if you exceeded these percentages. And the idea was that you were saying, look, don't go here. If you go here, you're going to require a super majority and you're not likely to get it to trying to sway people from pursuing variances for oversized homes. A C variance is a bare majority. And so the idea at least is that those are easier to get and those are less of a deterrent. That um, policy was challenged before the Supreme Court of the United States. And Fairhaven defended its case uh, and won uh, and prevailed. Um, and was told by the Supreme Court that they were able to regulate the size of homes in this manner. That case is the Rumsen Estates case. That case is a little over twenty years old. Since then, uh, we have used this system in Fairhaven. Um, we're not the only town to use it, but it is um, not common. Um, and what's happened is that the interpretation of habitable floor area. That's a core component of uh, determining habitable floor area ratio uh, has become a um. Less than certain definition. And so to give you an example, a house that was built across the street from me on Lake Avenue. Uh, the second floor was built with five bedrooms. Um, five bedrooms is okay, but the area that was the fifth bedroom uh, was shown on the plans as an attic. So there was a door, there was a room, but there was no sheetrock and they called it an attic. And it was interpreted by our building department as an attic. And so it didn't count. And so the house was given a green light to be built as a conforming home with. Area on the second floor that was clearly intended to be finished as a bedroom, but was shown on the plans in such a way. Uh, that it was not counted as a bedroom. And so that and a number of other examples have been utilized by architects in clever ways. To do a workaround to our existing ordinances. So. The recommendation from the land use committee is to figure out how to uh, streamline that definition. Interestingly, that idea is not unique to the land use committee of twenty twenty-one. It is actually an idea that was written up in the two thousand and sixteen master plan reexamination. Um, that was uh, actually spearheaded by CCH. And so what was, what, what was determined was you could get all the benefits of the D variance. Without all the irregularity of how you measure, if you stop calling it habitable. Just call it floor area and measure it in a more uniform and consistent manner. Making it easier to understand and making it consistent across the board so that you can eliminate the loopholes. And you can create a standard that, you know, you can then uh, compare apples to apples. So, um, the committee um, in its work, uh, consulted with building um, inspectors out of Rumsen. And consulted with uh, some of the folks in the building department at Fairhaven. And there's more than one idea as to how to calculate that um, floor area. And so the process of figuring out how to make a recommendation to council is a process of trying to understand what some of those options are. Um, and sort of vetting that with the public. Betsy, you have your hand up?
No. Sorry.
So anyway, so um, no one's really had any time to read it because it only came out yesterday, but um. Please, wh- when you're um, not in this meeting, um, it would be great to have a volunteer or two. Uh, to join together with a volunteer or two from the zoning board to sort of spearhead this effort. Um, I think um, leaning into it, um, that having um, a professional or two work with us. And having the boroughs professionals come in and speak to us, um, probably in a public setting. Uh, about how these things can be measured. And by the way, it's not nearly as I can make it seem. Uh, not nearly as easy as I can make it seem. It, the, the committee really sort of struggled with kind of what the options were and. You know, there isn't a perfect solution. There are, you know, a series of ideas, but you know, each one has, you know, things that need to be considered. Um, in a few months after we get through that process, um, you know, what we've been asked to do is to make a recommendation to the council. Um, uh, with regard to ordinances. Uh, the council would then write those ordinances with their professionals. And then that would then move through the normal process, which would be the ordinance gets drafted. It gets read, it gets sent to the planning board, planning board has an opportunity to review it. Um, discuss it in public and then send their comments back to the council. So there is a big, long public process to follow. Um, but I just wanted to highlight what the planning board has been asked to do. Um, in conjunction with the committee, um, and for the benefit of the council's efforts to move this along. Any questions about that? Okay. Fred, we've got, uh, oh my, quite a lot of administrative items. You ready to run through them?
Yes. So, um, so let's start with the approval of the, of the minutes from the main meeting on February twenty-second. Uh, twenty twenty-two, those minutes were distributed to the board uh, prior to this meeting for review. Uh, there were no comments that, that came back. Uh, so I will uh, make a motion to approve the February twenty-second. Uh, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes unless there are questions from, from any of the board members. Okay, uh, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nicka?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
There was also uh, an executive session uh, last meeting, uh, minutes uh, were published. Uh, for that uh, executive session and distributed to the board uh, prior to this meeting. Um, I'd ask if there are any questions or comments on, on those minutes. Um, and then we can make a motion to approve. So I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the uh, the minutes from the executive session uh, of, of last meeting.
Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nicka?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
So the third item on the administration is the approval of revised minutes from our December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting. There was uh, an amendment with regards to um, to attendance. So, um. Uh, none of the other, uh, none of the other elements of the um, meeting minutes changed. So I will make a motion to approve those minutes um, for this uh, attendance correction.
Got it.
Okay, let's see. Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Olson? Not yet. Uh, Mr. Burkhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Uh, the next item is the resolution for M and M Realty Partners at Fairhaven LLC. Block thirty-one, lot one, six twenty-six, River Road, preliminary and final site plan approval. So this is the. The uh, the, the M and M site that we've been talking about over the last, um, I believe, three meetings, right, Todd? And so, um, we've, I think, finally now have the, the resolution drafted and, um. And it conforms to everything that we've talked about over the, the last several meetings. I don't know if there are any comments or, or other discussion points that need to be. Uh, brought up here on this one, Todd.
Oh, um, so this is the resolution that's been modified. Um, we went through this um, with a fine tooth comb, literally.
Yeah.
Uh, at the last meeting, um, and those changes have all been incorporated. This document has been circulated to council. And in his absence, I think we have achieved his approval. Um, and uh, Doug is not here to say otherwise. So, yeah, that's uh, that's it. This is the new and improved.
All right. Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
This, uh, what we're approving the site plan. It can change if the county does not grant. Egress from River Road into uh, that particular site, correct?
So. So, so here's the way it's structured. Um, it's got two fail safes in the document. I don't know, I don't know if anybody has it in front of them or could pull it up. But first of all, it's expressly noted inside of the resolution that the decision of the board is tied directly. Um, to that access point being there. And so I, I said it that way on purpose, Betsy, because there was some discussion about moving it slightly to the east. Um, that was actually requested by the county planning board. And I think those.
And the owner requested that, didn't. No, he wanted it moved west, sorry.
So that, I, I don't know what they're going to be able to do, but there was some fiddling that was done. To try to make it work. And then the, the county planning board was asking for them to try and eliminate it. Um, the Borough of Fairhaven has been in touch with Rich Gardella, specifically the county planning board, to explain to them. That it is integral to the design uh, of that site. Um, so anyway, so it's subject to that entrance being there, number one. Number two, it's conditioned on all the plans. So it's a specific approval for that particular plant. Um, and so that sort of change would not be done uh, without having to come back to the board.
Okay, wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have a quick. I'm sorry, I just have a quick point of order. Although I was at the last meeting, I was not at the two main meetings discussing this. So I believe I need to recruise myself from this and I see Sandy nodding her head. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So I'll make a motion to uh, approve the resolution for M and M Realty Partners.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nicka?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Uh, the next item is, again, is, is the resolution for Elvento Builders LLC, block thirty-eight, lot two, thirty-seven, Third Street. This is a modification to the approval for grant, for granting preliminary and final minor subdivision approval. I. Did anybody have any questions on that uh, on that resolution?
No.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Elvento Builders uh, resolution.
I'll second.
Mr. Borderlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Nicka?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Um, so our next, our next um, administrative item is the pending resolution authorizing the award of contract for the board engineer. And so I know that we had talked in executive session and also at the, uh, at the formal meeting last week about. Um, uh, about it and an offer out to Rich Gardella for the planning board engineer. Uh, and that there was a contract offer or would be a contract offer made. Todd, I, I don't know if there's, has there been any, um. Any movement on that or any further discussion that needs to be had at the board level?
So here's what happened at the zoning board. Um, CME, um, who has been um, selected by the zoning board as their uh, engineer. Presented a contract. We presented that contract to uh, the zoning board attorney. Zoning board attorney suggested we change direction and use the contract that we've been using for many years. Um, with uh, Jim Kennedy. Uh, we then took that and we sort of massaged it. Because at the zoning board, the engineer is going to be doing the uh, review of all the applications. Um, that would not be the case here. Um, and so, and that, that's been approved at the zoning board level. Um, and it's been executed and it's uh, in effect. Um, Sandy, what I'd like to ask you to do, that's as far as it's gone. Uh, Sandy, I'd like you to please send that contract. You have that because of your work with the zoning board. Um, I'd like you to send that to Doug. And I'd like you to copy Fred and I on the outgoing. And just tell Doug that you were asked to send it to him for the purpose of preparing something for Mr. Gardella. And then we'll let Doug go to it and then, um, you know, we'll move it over to Rich. Uh, you know, once you've got it tuned in for, for this, for this role. Uh, but obviously it won't have that language about the uh, review of the applications.
Great. So should we, should we make a formal uh, formal resolution yet? Todd, I don't think so, right?
No, I, I think we did. So we, we had a vote and we just made it subject to a contract. So. We'll work through it with Doug and then we'll present it to Rich. And then when Rich is ready. Um, then we'll uh, follow Doug's guidance as to whether or not we should have another resolution to approve the contract from our end, but that may or may not be necessary.
All right, um, the next item on the administrative, uh, on the administrative list is the, the pending resolution authorizing the award of contract for the board attorney. And so, I, I, I believe we were all, um. We, we had all voted in line with, with um, um, awarding the, the attorney. Uh, contract to Doug Kovats and his firm. And so, um, I. I believe we just need, I don't think there's anything to do here, right?
No, I think there actually, I think there actually is. Sandy, I haven't seen his new contract. Can you please um, email Doug? And ask him, um, what I'd like to see is a comparison of last year's contract to this one. If everything's the same, including his rate, it's good to go. We can just proceed. If there's any proposed changes, I want to understand what they are and I bring that back to the board, but. Uh, presumably nothing's changed and, you know, we can proceed with it. Uh, but I, I haven't seen it.
Okay, I haven't seen anything either, so I will do that.
Uh, the next, oh, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so the, the next item on the stormwater management training, everybody should be aware that there is a state requirement that any board members. Do a thirty, forty minute, you know, Sandy? do a thirty, forty minute, you know, Sandy?
The folks that need to do it, it received an email with the link um and even folks that are um
Reappointed.
Yeah, anybody reappointed, newly appointed, it's the two categories, have to do the video and follow the link.
So if if you haven't seen it yet, it it's actually very interesting. It's a little longer than it needs to be. And if you've already done it before, you still have to do it again, in which case it's a lot longer than it needs to be. Um, but that is the requirement, so please just be aware of it and put it on your list of things that you plan to do another day. The last thing is the zoning board annual report. Um, that should have been circulated to everybody. Um, there's a lot of information in that report. Um, and particularly for those that have interest in the ordinance changes. Um, you know, a lot of these things find their origin and what the zoning board goes through, you know, month in, month out, with regard to requests for deviations, things that are right, things that aren't right. Um, there's a lot of that sort of stuff in the report. Um, that report also goes through variances that have been granted um and has a lot of data in it that might be of interest. So please flip through that. If anybody would like to have a discussion about it, we can do that certainly now if you're interested. Uh, or at a later date, if you find um that you have questions or want to talk it through. Okay. So that's really, uh, that's it. The, the other thing that just popped into my head was the issue with regard to email addresses. Hey, Betsy, just to let you know, um, we've specifically asked the borough um to give us email addresses uh both at the zoning and the planning board. The reason for that is because we want to create separate email accounts for the purposes of uh discovery in the event of any litigation at any time. Um, what we were told by Teresa was that there was going to be a charge, I think it was a hundred dollars per account per year. Um, that's uh nine for the zoning board and eleven for the planning board. That's two thousand dollars. I have no idea why it couldn't just be, you know, Betsy Koch, planning board member, fairhaven@gmail.com. Uh, and I haven't, I haven't engaged Teresa on the subject, but could you just be, please be aware that we're looking to do that. If there's a way to do it without an expense, then we should. I- if it is subject to an expense, maybe then we just don't do it. I don't know. Um, it was recommended by all the attorneys.
I know. There is, I will tell you, there is an expense even for council members to have their own um fairhavenborough.net address. It, prior to that, council members had their own Gmail, was uh whatever your name is, fairhaven@gmail.com. I don't know if if uh members of the planning board and the zoning board would be so inclined to do that, to create their own separate email address. But but it is, there is a cost associated. It is about a hundred dollars a person. And uh, right now, we're setting up the budget, the fiscal budget for twenty twenty-two. So if we're going to ask um uh the borough to subsidize individual email accounts, then it needs to be done now before the final budget comes up for re- for uh
Sandy, can you, can you maybe send an email to Teresa and to Greg with a copy to Betsy, uh Fred and I? And ask whether or not i- if there had been a past practice of using Gmail, whether or not that's not a viable option here? All everybody's going to get in their inbox for this board is the circulation of digital plans. Um, uh, the agendas, I mean, it's, it's very, very thin these days as to what we email. Um, and so I could hardly see justification for spending that money if the Gmail account would do it. We can set up our own personal addresses. Why wouldn't a Gmail account work?
You can definitely do that. We did it as council members. But it'd be good to get the opinion of a legal expert.
Yeah, why don't we just see if we can get that? And then what we would do is we create some sort of a uh uh standardized um way of doing it so that all the addresses were available. And I think so they all look the same uniformity and will wear the same shirts to meetings and everybody's got to grow their hair long like me.
Can I ask, why, can I, can I, can I just ask the question why the the borough wouldn't provide that? I, I if there's a borough system, why, why is there an additional cost to each or or would be to add users? I, I, I mean, that, I can't imagine that an email platform works that way at this point in time.
Well, according, according to to the administration in Borough Hall, there is a cost associated. And if we have twenty members of planning and zoning, plus you would, you would want to include your professionals, I think, or just use their professional address. It it could, it could cost close to two thousand dollars and that would have to be budgeted for.
Is the Good, sorry.
Uh, as I say, is the email platform for the borough is not a flat fee per year for so, I, I, I guess it
I, I, I can't answer you that. I just know that when, two years ago, when we asked to have our, our own, I mean, we were using our own personal email addresses up until a couple of years ago. Uh, that there was an individual cost associated with that. Why there's a cost associated with that, I cannot answer that question.
My, my question was, you know, who who do we use for email hosting? And, you know, is their contract up or when is their contract up? Or if you guys are doing a budget, have we looked at other um companies to host our email that maybe don't charge a hundred dollars per person to get an email?
I, I don't have an answer. I can find out tomorrow. I can start the process and check into it tomorrow why we're paying that much money per person on the platform, but I don't have the answer to that.
And I just, I just want to clarify, nobody's refused to give us addresses. It just came up that it was going to be a hundred dollars. And so then everybody's like, ah, and didn't know what to do. And so it's not done.
I mean, I, I, I think the, having a at fairhavenborough.net or dot org or whatever the borough's um website is, is the proper way to do it as opposed to personally.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Is it, Betsy, is it just a cost allocation? Is that, is that what it, is that the is that the, or is it an actual real out, I mean, I, I guess you don't know yet, uh, an actual real out-of-pocket cost? Because I, if it's just an allocation from one, one bucket to the, to another, I'm not suggesting that that's not important, but it, it just seems strange that it would be an out-of-pocket a hundred dollars a person per year.
I, 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 but I can start the process tomorrow to find out.
Thank you. I, I don't think it's an allocation, but I, I was told it was going to cost an extra hundred dollars per member. Um, that, that's the information that Teresa received. Uh, I, I think there's a deeper question there as to why. Uh, i- i- if it's common that it's less expensive and more readily available, then, you know, maybe we should be exploring why somebody's asking us for this money. All right. Um, I'm going to go to the public. I see we have a couple of uh diehards that are still here. Do uh either of the attendees have any comments or questions for the board? Not really questions. We're not prepared to answer them. Comments? Okay. Uh, seeing none. Um, please give some thought to um who might be willing to spend some time with the land use issues. Um, I'm looking for volunteers uh to me, maybe just on the side, if you think that you're up for it. Um, it's uh, it's God's work. All right. Well, thank everybody. Um, motion to adjourn, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Todd.
Welcome. Thank you, Betsy.
See you guys.